Twenty twenty-five to order, please. Could I have a roll call?
Mayor Delaney.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
And Councilmember Pollock.
Here.
I think we have a forum.
Thank you. Please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda. Is there any additions, changes, or deletions to our agenda? Anyone have anything they'd like to delete or add? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Some more.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda, and our consent agenda contains the, uh, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting minutes, the payment of claims and listing of bills. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Community concerns. Deb, do we have anyone signed in for community concerns?
We do, Nelson Vanderpoel.
Okay.
In the audience.
At this time is our community concern. So Nelson, if you'd like to come up to the podium and state your full name and address, and we're here to listen.
Okay, I'm Nelson Vanderpoel. I live at nine oh four, nine zero four, Second Street Southwest, Pipestone. Have lived there for fifty-four years. I taught thirty years at Dawson Hill Elementary when it existed. And I'd like to talk a few minutes about my current utility bill, because we always go away five months plus a little bit more. And normally, it was thirty dollars to shut the water off, thirty dollars to put it on, sixty dollars each year. And this year, I have so far four bills. The first two were a hundred and two sixty-two, then the next two were seventy-seven eighty-seven. And I'm figuring I'll get one more, and I just assume it will be seventy-seven eighty-seven. Okay, here's something to think about. I called Laverne, East City Off, and talked to the utility person. I said, how much do you charge a snowbird to go away for the winter? Forty dollars to put the, excuse me, put the water back on. So a total for five months of forty dollars. So what would it be if that snowbird goes for five years? It would be two hundred dollars. Okay, Pipestone. If, if my figuring for the last, I have to assume my last billing will be like the last two, seventy-seven eighty-seven. If you put those four together, you have four thousand, no, four hundred and three, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents per, excuse me, per five months. So if you go away for five winters, that's two thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-five cents compared to Laverne, which is forty for one snowbird winter and two for another one. Okay, what about Marshall? Flat fee of twenty-three fifty per month when the snowbird is gone. That's a hundred and seventeen fifty for one year. That's five eighty-seven fifty for five years. How about Slayton? Twenty-four dollars per year, five-month snowbird year, or not year, five months. Twenty-four dollars per, so that would be a hundred and twenty dollars, and if the snowbird went five years, it would be six hundred. And once again, comparing that with the Pipestone snowbird pays, um, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents for one five months, five-month snowbird year, and two thousand, one hundred and ninety-four for twenty-five. So what I'm wondering is, you know, being that there's such a huge difference, is there some room to think about that and maybe work out, hopefully work out a compromise? That's basically what I'm saying. And I appreciate your letting me make my comments.
Well, thank you, Nelson, for your comments, and by rule, we cannot act on anything at a community concern because it's not on the agenda, but that doesn't mean we can't act on it at a later meeting. But this meeting, we specifically can just take information in only, so.
Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you.
Very much.
Okay. Next up is our presentation, and that's ordinance one sixty-six, fourth series, Amending City Code Utility Service Line Regulations. And that's the Water, Wastewater Superintendent Joel Alderman will begin to give us a presentation on that. Come on up to the podium, Joel.
Well, I don't know what kind of presentation you're looking for, I guess, but, um, I can start off by saying, for years, the way the, way the, our policy's read, um, on the water side, uh, the curb stop was kind of the dividing point. Um, that was a fifty-fifty cost share, um, between homeowner and city. Um, and then anything from the curb stop to our city main was city responsibility, and anything from the curb stop going back to the house was homeowner responsibility. Um, that, that's strictly the water. Not the sewer side of things. We were, uh, the homeowner owned from the, basically from, from the main to include the connection on the main to, to the house. I guess, to take it a step further, we're, we're looking at, what we're looking at here is trying to try to minimize some costs, I think, for, for more, I mean, it's obviously it's getting expensive to dig in the road, um, for sewer services, replacement, uh, some of the bills that we've seen, Deb and I have seen come through for homeowners, um, to take on is, and it's not necessarily just the digging portion of it, I think it's more replacement of the street, it gets to be so expensive. So we, we, we are trying to work through a, uh, policy, if that's what we want to call it, I guess, uh, to, uh, try to compromise to make it a little more user-friendly for homeowners. Um, and I think we came up, I think we came up with a good solution personally. Um, it's going to cost the city a little bit more money on some repairs, probably. I guess moving forward, but, um, I guess from that side, side of things, at least one of the things that's getting fixed right, and it's things are getting taken care of properly and, yeah, I don't know what we're, Dan, you're looking for, for me to talk about it, but I can certainly answer any questions you guys have.
I, I think just putting it in layman's terms like you did, um, makes it easy for the public to understand what we're doing, and certainly for the council too, and we certainly want to make your job as easy as we can too, Joel. And I think these modifications will do that. Um, it's easier for the, uh, private citizen to understand they're responsible for everything from their property line on, and it's difficult to explain, well, no, you're responsible all the way to the middle of the street i- like it was in the past, and to me, that's not fair. Because, uh, once that street is built and it's used by everyone, um, it's everyone's responsibility, not just that property owner that happens to live there and had an issue with his, uh, water line, which may have been no fault to him at all. Could have been just worn out or faulty equipment or poor insulation or, you know, who knows what the reason is, but things like that happen, so, um.
So, yeah, I guess moving forward, just to kind of reiterate what we're looking at going forward, um, so the property line will be the cutoff for homeowner versus city. Um, and typically, that is a foot to eighteen inches behind the, the house side of the sidewalk. Typically, now, obviously, every right away is a little bit different, but the majority of the stuff around town is, is that way. Um, so if, if the sewer is, you know, obviously, the sewer line would be from, so the city would be responsible from, basically from a foot to eighteen inches behind the sidewalk of the house side of the sidewalk to the main, to include the connection. And then the water would be, the city would be responsible for the curb stop. And then anything, again, behind, behind the, uh, sidewalk there is foot to eighteen inches would be, uh, that would be the, the cutoff line, but the curb stop still would be the city's responsibility. And typically, on new construction projects anyway, or any new water service that we put in, we typically put the curb stop now behind the, in that, on that property line anyway. So I think it's a good trade-off for what we're looking at doing for a policy moving forward, so.
Now, and, and that's a good point also to bring up, Joel. This is for existing, um, water lines only, these modifications. Any new development, it would still be the same, would be the developer's responsibility hook up to that, uh, water main, correct?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we would, the curb stop was already, like I said, the curb stops have already been put in on most of the, like, southwest acres, the curb stops are already in there. They're already at the property line. So they would, the homeowner would just hook on to that point and then take off to their, to their house, but, yeah.
Yeah, good. Any questions or comments for Joel?
Also, intern Travis, uh, by going to this, this, doing it this way, it should make in, uh, their assessments last too, because they won't be repaying for everything going from the main.
The assessment policy reflects this methodology as well.
Yep, so all in all, we save everybody money then.
I think just, one thing I want, I guess I would point out to, uh, you, you council members is, is moving forward, the, our repair maintenance costs are going to have to increase, so, I mean, for our budget, so we can't continue to operate, you know, per se at what we have been, because obviously them costs of, are now changing, so, um, so moving at that budget time, we need to make sure we're prepared for that, so, um, everybody understands that, so unfortunately, that's something that kind of slips through though.
He's already.
Okay.
I'm looking, looking into the future, Dan.
All right, good, good.
Just preparing for everybody, so.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions for you guys?
Anything else? No, good, all right.
All right, thank you, have a good night.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Joel.
Yeah.
Next up is legal, ordinance one sixty-five, fourth series, and that's an ordinance of the city of Pipestone vacating all that part of the platted sixteen-foot-wide east-west alley lying between block one and two Crawford's Edition in the city of Pipestone, according to the plot thereof on file and of record in the office of the county recorder in Pipestone, Minnesota. And this ordinance was introduced April twenty-first, and now it's time to act on it, so I'd entertain a motion to, uh, approve that vacating that alley.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Ordinance one sixty-six, fourth series, and this is an ordinance amending chapters fifty and ninety-one of the city code regarding the regulations of utility service lines in the city. And it's basically what Joel had just explained to us, and so if we want to move ahead with that, I'd entertain a motion.
Some more. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Uh, engineering is a, a P-A-P-I and R-E-I-L, pay request number four, so I'll turn this over to Travis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, this is payoff number four and final, um, for the PAPI and, uh, R-E-L-I, uh, light replacements out at the airport. These are the, I believe, the lights along the side and the back of the runway. Um, the contractor, Warner Brothers, Inc., has completed all work and submitted their final paperwork for closeout, so this is simply to release the retainage of, uh, twelve thousand, four hundred, forty-two dollars and no cents. But we recommend approval.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion for the, uh, final payment of twelve thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars.
I'll move, make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. New business, request for council action in the Performing Arts Center. Pipestone Performing Arts Center on the curb, it wants to, uh, or I'm sorry, is requesting permission to place four flags right outside the Performing Arts Center on the curb to promote the upcoming musical comedy, Honk, the musical tale of the ugly duckling. Show dates are June nineteenth and twenty-second through to twenty-second and June twenty-sixth through to twenty-ninth. The flags would be flown downtown on the curb after Memorial Day during the entire month of June. The flags will include the show title and performance dates. Um, we've approved this in the past, and so we're just giving a little bit of, uh, free advertising here too on this performance, because I, I think that it, it sounds like a great, uh, a great musical, so entertain a motion to approve that request.
Some more.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions?
What about Flag Day?
Pardon me?
What about Flag Day?
What about Flag Day?
They put flags out on.
We could probably request them to remove them and then they can put them back up after you're done. We can talk to Park.
I think just the one day.
It's just one day.
For that one day, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, good point, Verdine. Thanks for bringing that up. We'll mention that. Okay, anything else? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Another request for council action, and this is a Relay for Life, the Pipestone Relay for Life Committee is requesting the use of six picnic tables and four ninety-five-gallon garbage totes for their planned taco drive through fundraiser event at Dave's Guns on May fifteenth. Uh, this is a new event, and the city has assisted with Relay for Life in the past, but this is something new that they're trying, and we all know Relay for Life is a fundraiser for combating, uh, um, cancer and getting funds together for cancer research, so.
I'll make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions? And the city would actually take those there and drop, drop them off, pick them up.
Pick them up, yep.
Good, okay. All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-seven, uh, this is a grant of variance for First State Bank Southwest Mansol, the second sign that exceeds the required sign limit at two oh two Eighth Avenue Southeast in the city of Pipestone. Uh, the Board of Adjustments and Appeals held a public hearing, and, uh, they are recommending the council approve that variance. It's basically the same, uh, sign, they're just going to have an additional, uh, electronic area on that air, uh, those poles, so, um.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, all right. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other questions concerned? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty, or twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight. The Pipestone Area Friends of the Library has donated, uh, one thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents, uh, in books and prize items to the library, and we would need to approve that. This is for the promotion of National Library Week.
I move we accept that donation.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine, this one approves engineering plans and specifications in order to advertising a bid for the industrial road project. It is planned for bids will be accepted until six thirty PM on June second, twenty twenty-five, and for the council to consider awarding a bid at their June sixteenth council meeting. So I'd entertain a motion for that approval.
I'll move, second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty, at our last council meeting, two bids were received for the eighty-by-eighty airport hangar project, and, uh, Bolton Mink has reviewed the bids and is recommending the council approve the low bid of eight hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-six cents from Everstrong Construction, Inc. of Redwood Falls. And Travis, can you, just for the public's benefit, can you explain, um, the actual cost to the city on this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the, through the, uh, through the, um, Federal Jobs or Infrastructure and Jobs Act, um, or the, yeah, bipartisan infrastructure law, the city has some additional funds that are, need to be used this year or next year. Uh, one of the eligible expenses is hangar construction, so that was why this is, has been a need out at the airport, and, uh, it's, it's a good fit for that. Um, total cost to the city in the end, um, is just under twenty-four thousand dollars for, uh, construction and engineering and administration. So that's two and a half percent of the overall project. Ninety-five percent is paid by the FAA and two and a half percent by the state.
Okay, so it's a good bang for our buck.
I'll make a motion to approve that, uh, bid.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Uh, proposal for professional services, and at our November eighteenth council meeting, the city council authorized Bolton Mink proposal to complete design and bid administrative services for the construction of the eighty-by-eighty hangar at the airport. And now they provided the council with a proposal for professional services, which will include construction administration services. The proposal is included in the council packet, and the total sum of the proposal is eighty thousand dollars, of which seventy-six thousand, ninety-five percent of it will be paid by the federal funding. Two thousand, two-point-five percent of it will be paid for by state funding. So the city's responsibility for the remaining, uh, would be two thousand dollars or two-point-five percent of the total bill. So I'd entertain a motion to pay that bill.
Some more. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions, comments?
If I could just, uh, mention, that's included in the total amount of the city, uh, total of the city's responsibility, I previously mentioned, of twenty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, all right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. We need to appoint an interim accounts payable administrative assistant, and with the recent resignation of our accounts payable administrative assistant, um, Administrator Nelson is proposing to appoint Ashley Wees, our current administrative assistant, as an interim accounts payable administrative assistant. And I'd entertain a motion to approve that, uh, appointment.
If I could.
Yes, go right ahead.
Have a few words. Um, uh, this would be a probationary period for approximately three months. We recognize the talent that we have existing in our employees here, and of course, we would like to encourage promoting within, and so that's why we'd like to give Ashley this opportunity. She knows the system, and so we would like to, um, have her step up and, and take this on, and we will review her again in August to see how she's doing, so.
Good.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Deb. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. We have Coburn's, uh, is requesting a fireworks license.
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped, I skipped one, yeah. Authorizing administrat- advertisement for interim administrative assistants. So now that we've, uh, actually promoted our administrative assistant, we need to advertise to, uh, replace her, and so I'd entertain a motion to, uh, allow city staff to advertise for the administrative assistant.
This would be an interim position as well, um, at the front desk.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries.
Thank you.
Fireworks license approval. Coburn's is requesting to sell Minnesota Legal Fireworks at their store, and we've approved that in the past. Entertain a motion for, uh, approval of the fireworks license for Coburn's.
Some more.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Next up is our appreciation day proclamation, and I have a proclamation to read into the, uh, record. Uh, May fifth, twenty twenty-five, whereas organizations nationwide are recognizing city childcare providers on May ninth, and whereas city care system support children's growth, development, and educational advancement and creates a positive economic impact for families and communities, and whereas childcare providers are essential to the health of our communities by fostering welcoming spaces, support working families, and create positive, enriching environments where children can develop lifelong skills, and whereas the city of Pipestone recognizes that childcare has been and continues to be a lifeline for families, communities, and the economy. As such, it has provided much-needed support to the providers to help sustain the viability of childcare, and whereas support for affordable, accessible, high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to help families work, support children's health, development, and learning, and keep our economy growing. Now, therefore, I, Dan Delaney, mayor of the city of Pipestone, hereby proclaim May ninth, twenty twenty-five, as Provider Appreciation Day in the city of Pipestone, and urge all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work and how valuable they are for our communities. And I would just like to comment that they are the workforce behind the workforce, and without our childcare providers, we would all be in a world of hurt, so really appreciate the work they do. Okay. Next up is, uh, closing comments. Does anyone have any closing comments?
Not on a proclamation.
Okay. Is there any, uh, closing comments? I do have one.
I got one.
Oh, go ahead, Scott.
Um, just a reminder to everybody that as they come by picking up for cleanup week, once they've been there, they're not coming back, so. Just a heads up.
And then people are going through and, like, tearing piles apart, and I kind of respect, ask them to respect the homeowner, and I saw where someone had dropped off some items. Pick something up and drop something off, which, you know, is it's not like a game of cards. You pick it up and find something better, then you get rid of it, but, I mean, not put anything on anybody's boulevard that's not your own.
Yeah.
We do not pick up tires, so please pick up your tires off the boulevard. We do not pick up appliances. Pick up your appliances. We don't pick up those. What else did, would they say? What was tires and appliances?
Mattresses, I think.
Mattresses, couches, uh, scoats, uh, chairs with springs in them unless they're prepaid. But, yeah, we do not pick up appliances or tires, so, thank you.
All right. And then by Friday, we'll be finished with that again until next fall, so.
Until fall, and that one is not pickup. That's drive-by.
Okay, so I have a.
I mean, drop-off, sorry about that.
That's drop-off, right.
Drop-off, yeah.
I have a closing comment on some warranty work that will be, uh, scheduled here shortly, and this is just a heads up for everyone. Uh, Dunick and their subcontractors will be completing concrete pavement repairs on Second Street Southeast from Fourth Avenue Southeast to Seventh Avenue Southeast. For this work, most of the center of the twenty-two feet of the roadway will be removed and replaced. Uh, the schedule is currently planned for saw cutting the removal areas on May seventh or May eighth, uh, with pavement removals the week of May twelfth, and concrete paving the week of May nineteenth. So residents should avoid parking on the impacted area until the new pavement is open to traffic. And apologize for the inconvenience, but, uh, this is warranty work that, uh, we're requiring the contractor to come back and, uh, finish that area up correctly. And so thank you for your patience on it.
And I have had a question on this already. They want to know, since it's the middle of the street that's being cut open, the twenty-two feet in the center of the street, will the sides be open so people can access their driveways and to drive down? And how will this affect garbage pickup?
At this time, I'm planning, I'm, I'm going to say that the, the parking areas can be used for driving to access driveways. Garbage collection, I need to talk with Public Works on that to see how we can, can take care of that.
Okay.
See if we can collaborate.
Thank you. And please contact City Hall, eight two five three three two four, if you have any other questions, and we'll, we'll sure to get, be sure to get you your answers, so.
Okay. Any other closing comments?
We have May eighth, ICA walk run for Parkinson's.
PCM C's putting that one on for their Parkinson's program.
Yeah, that, that is a wonderful program. That's, is that rocking the?
Yes.
The boxing?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the one.
And, and it's a good, good fundraiser. Walk or run, it's at the school area, and encourage people to come out. Yeah, okay. Anything else? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say no, and motion carries.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you, everyone.